We'll go ahead and get started. I'll ask Father Sterling from St. Barbara's Church to come up and give us the invocation for this evening.
Thank you, Tyson. Even though St. Barbara's property, the majority of it sits in Independence, our mailing address is Earlanger. And I feel like since I went to St. Henry's, I'm always a member of Earlanger, so I'm happy to be here. So, thank you. Let us pray. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts. We come together this evening to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations. Help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from shortsightedness or pettiness. Help us to make decisions that strive to be for the good of all, and guard us from blind self-interest. Finally, dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do. All glory to be to you, loving God, now and forever. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. I've got a meeting back at church, but you all have a great meeting.
Thank you, Father. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular council meeting, April 4th, 2017. I'd like to ask that we please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Hoffman, will you please take roll call?
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Cahill? Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp?
Here.
Ms. Cahill? Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Pitts?
Here.
Mr. Nicely? Ms. Fetty?
Here.
Mr. Blankenship?
Here.
All right, we've got a quorum. You've received a copy of the minutes from the March 7th, 2017, regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented. Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Ms. Fetty. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, you've received a copy of the agenda for the April 4th, 2017, regular council meeting. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. All right, first then, under special presentations, we've got a business spotlight, corporate storage system. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I had a... My name is Jay Geisler. I'm the owner of Corporate Storage Systems here in Earlanger. We're over on Kenton Lands Road. I received a message from Dave Hahn, I don't know, a month or two ago, that the mayor wanted to visit our business. Of course, I got really nervous. But, because I've been in business since '05 here in Earlanger, I've been in the service industry for many years, about 25 years, I've never had a visit from a local government official, so, thank you. We had a great time. I got to give them a tour. We talked about a lot of good things, and I was invited to come here for this spotlight, so I thank you both for inviting me. Basically, Corporate Storage Systems is, we are an off-site records management, off-site storage facility. Physical storage, we have two 20,000-square-foot warehouses over off of Kenton Lands Road, and we store documents with barcoded technology. We do business here, mostly in northern Kentucky, but we do also do business in the Cincinnati market and have many customers there as well. We also do scanning and document imaging, and store those documents in a cloud-based repository, so you can log in and look at your documents electronically if you don't want to store them physically. We've been in Earlanger since 1999. I've owned it since 2005. I bought it when it was a very, very small operation. My background was, I was a general manager for Iron Mountain Records Management, which is the largest publicly-owned, off-site records management company in the world. I left there in '03 and then purchased this building in '05. We also bought the building there on Kenton Lands Road, and we did some more conversions and some more additions to the storage to give it a lot more capacity. And we took on another building across the street, the Palm Beach Building, if you're familiar with that. We have 20,000 square feet there, which is our growth facility. And we manage and store approximately, in physical storage, about 120,000 cubic feet of boxes, and we store and manage approximately 15 million images right now for many companies here in northern Kentucky and Cincinnati. We have seven people that work for us. Also have a sister operation in Lafayette, Louisiana. It's a long story, but I visit down there about every other month, and when I come home, I have to go back to the gym frequently to work off the gumbo that I ate there, so... But basically, we help businesses just manage, store, organize their documents off-site, whether it be physically or whether it be electronically in the cloud, so that's pretty much it. Again, thank you for your time, and there... I ran out of squeeze boxes over on this side here, so I'll bring some and leave them at the desk, but this is our stress box, so when we get stressed at work, we use this box. We give them to our customers, and they can take it out on that, so... All right? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Geisler. All right, then next we have on the agenda is the Community Heroes... Community Hero Award. Serena, is it okay if I read the proclamation first?
Yes.
Okay. "To all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas in 2010 Larry and Serena Owen began the Community Hero Award Program to express their appreciation and to honor community members for their selfless devotion in serving within the community. And whereas in 2017 the Earlanger Elsmere Community Heroes are..." And I'll apologize ahead of time if I mess up someone's name. Kelly Bailey, Earlanger dispatcher. Kaylee Barber. Mona Cruthers-Smith, excuse me. Denise Donahue with the City of Elsmere, the City of Elsmere Public Works, the City of Earlanger Public Works, Earlanger Elsmere Schools, Family Resource Centers. Kim Glenn, Bruce Greer, Jeff Vauntz, Rhonda Whitaker and the Duke Energy in Action Volunteers. The Ghost of Harriet Tubman, Patricia Humphries-Fann. Charles Lambert and the United Christian Volunteers. Marty Ann Livermore. Alejandra Me... Oh, boy, I might need some help on this one. Maiha, is that right? Or Maiha? Okay. Bill Stith, Terry Whitaker, and the Earlanger Historical Society's Edward Vaughn Hi, and the James A. Ramage Museum. And whereas the above-named individuals have made a difference in the Earlanger-Elsmere community by making a commitment to improve the quality of life of those who live and work there. And whereas the above-named individuals perform collectively to provide exemplary services for our community with integrity and pride. Recognizing the mission statement of City of Earlanger, and whereas the City of Earlanger hereby recognizes and honors each of these individuals for their outstanding service to our city. Now therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor and District Director of the City of Earlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2017, to be 2017 Community Heroes Day in Earlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Earlanger on this day, the 4th of April, 2017. Thank you.
So, good evening, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to acknowledge and honor our community heroes.
Serena, would you mind speaking into that mic?
It'll come off, I think.
Oh, yeah. There you go.
And just last year, we honored you, the City Council and the staff of the City of Earlanger, as our community heroes, so let's give you a round of applause again. And thank you for your service. Thank you. Would all of our community heroes for 2016 and '17 please come forward? So, since 2010, my husband and I, which is, this is like a ministry and outreach for us, we recognize that we have many individuals and folks within our community that work tirelessly to give back, and so we wanted to do something to help honor them and recognize them. We wanted to thank them, and also encourage others to give back to our community. So, if we could give them a round of applause again. Thank you, thank you for your sound and service. So, during Heritage Day, we also, we recognize our Community Hero Award recipients, and some of our recipients were able to make it and some were not. We also present trophies to our Community Hero Award recipients, and so we have a trophy for each one of you, and then we really, we are very grateful that our, that both Mayors of Earlanger and the Mayor of... Oh, right there. And the Mayor of the City of Elsmere present proclamations to our Community Hero Award recipients, so thank you very much for taking time to acknowledge our Community Hero Award recipients. You're welcome. Okay, so if you could come forward and give... And then we always do a photo op, and we get a picture with our lovely Mayor, so if we could gather around and take our picture. And then I always have something special for the council, too, so I didn't forget you again this year either. And I have a, I have a treat and another pen. If you didn't get your flag pen last year, go ahead and take a pen and a treat and pass that around, and we'll go ahead and pass out the proclamations. So, thank you all, thank you very much, and thank you to our... Oh, okay. What are...
Photo?
Yes, we would like the photo, but could our award recipients just state your name for our audience?
Charles Lambert with United Christian Volunteers.
Phyllis Lay with United Christian Volunteers.
Ed Milliken, Earlanger Public Works.
Good evening, I'm Kim Glenn with Duke Energy, and thank you so much for this recognition.
Ed Vaughn Hi, volunteer with the Ramage Civil War Museum and the Earlanger Depot.
Well, of course, I come from the past. My name is Patricia Humphries-Fann, and I'd like to say personally thank you to the Earlanger, City of Earlanger, that I lived in the City of Earlanger from 1977 to 1985, in which time I moved, but I would like to say this. When I moved to Earlanger in 1977, God moved me out here to find his presence in my life. And his presence in my life has brought me to this point today, and it's been a long, hard trip because of our culture, but I still, I plan to achieve and to help and be the best citizen that I can be in these United States of America. So, with that being said, I have something that I would like to present to each of our city commissioners, because we all have to know about each other's culture, so Serena, would you pass these out for me, please?
Yes, ma'am.
This is from the Kentucky Human Rights Commission, who people have been voted, and these are Kentuckians, and I'm proud to say that we have one in here. Two people from northern Kentucky, Annie Har Graves, got inducted into the Hall of Fame in 1910, I mean, 2010, and I was able to get her inducted into the Hall of Fame, and she was my schoolteacher.
Oh.
She was in my life. She was in my life from 1955 till 1976, and I followed her lead and did the best that I could possibly do to assist. Mrs. Summers, I have her grandson after her, and she was inducted into the Kentucky Human Rights Hall of Fame, and she was one of my mentors and one of my friends who gave me a desk for my office.
Oh.
So, I want to take the opportunity also to thank Serena, that I met years ago when she invited me up there to do my show at Northern Kentucky University, and we clicked, and we kept on clicking, and that is how I got here today. So, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to express myself today in my graciousness, so it isn't how long it takes you to get it, it's when you get it, it's how you feel about what it is that you get. So, in the words of the priest that just left, "To the one that is wise, there is no one wiser than the one that made the wise wise," and that is a direct quote from God to Patricia Humphries-Fann, the Ghost of Harriet Tubman. Thank you.
Awesome. May it go ahead.
All right. So, next on the agenda, we have service recognition. Officer Scroggen, and I'd like to invite Chief Wilson to come up to the podium.
Hello. We're here tonight to give Joe Scroggen his five-year pin with the city. Joe came to us five years ago on April 21st this year. He's currently, well, he's in his bike patrol uniform, so he's involved in the outer guard, bike patrol. He's also in charge of the explorer post for Earlanger. Joe's been a dedicated member of the police department since the day he walked in. He's currently aspiring to be a sergeant. We have an upcoming promotional process next month, and he is in that process. He gets a lot of support from his wife and two children, who I just found out, I thought he had three today, but he only got two. I tried to give him one of mine, but he didn't want it, so it is my honor and pleasure to present you with your five-year service pin.
Thank you. I didn't prepare anything, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's been a real pleasure, a real honor to be here and working in the City of Earlanger for the last five years, following my father's footsteps, who worked here a whole many years ago. I can't even imagine how long ago it was, but I'm very excited to be here. I look forward to another 20-plus years here, serving the city, and like Chief said, hopefully, hopefully I'll find a desk to sit at real soon, so... Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, next up, we've got the Mayor's Report. I've got a couple of things I just wanted to update on. So, I think a lot of you had heard, on March 17th, Toyota announced the Robling Innovation Center. This is the donation of their 100,000-square-foot facility for research and development that they donated to Boone County Schools, is actually going to head the program to be used for science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. This new STEAM Academy is to help grade school and high school students figure out what careers, their talents, and interests will take them to. It will be the first facility of its kind in the state of Kentucky, so it's very exciting that it's happening so close to home here. We had, we got a resignation from our Board, Earlanger Board of Adjustments, Doug Connolly sent his resignation, so we'll need to fill that seat. His continued education conflicts with the board meetings, so he's stepping down. If you have somebody that you would recommend and who's willing to volunteer their time, please, please send me their, an email with their contact information. Because of Easter, the next Kenton County Mayor's Group meeting is April 29th at 9:00 a.m. at the Fort Wright South Hills Civic Center. The next PDS meeting is Thursday, April 27th at 6:00 p.m., and as you may have heard, the PDS Management Board has voted to relocate from their current location in Fort Mitchell to the proposed Kenton County Fiscal Court Building that's at the Bavarian Brewery site in Covington. The next School Board meeting is Thursday, April 13th at 7:00 p.m., the lower level of the School Board Building. It's always the second Thursday of the month. I would like to request time, some time on the committee, at the next committee meeting on the 18th, to discuss procurement oversight committee. I would also like to... Oh, yeah, so it's something that Dave Hahn, and as Jay Geisler had mentioned earlier, something that we've been working on the last few years is going around and meeting with a lot of the businesses. You know, the whole point of this is to make sure that they know that we know they're here, and to open up a line of communications between us, so I want to make an announcement here for anyone who might watch the meetings, that, you know, if you're a business in the City of Earlanger, to please contact us so that we can meet face-to-face and open up those lines of communications. A draft version of our new website has been completed, and if you would be interested in looking at it and offering some of your constructive criticism, we'll be happy to send you that link, so you can take a look if there's any, anybody interested, or if you want me to send it to all council, we'd be happy to do that as well. All council, okay? Okay. Let's see, the next Kenton County Planning Commission meeting is this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. That's at the PDS Building on Royal Drive, and I would like to request for next month's meeting, something that we haven't necessarily done, would be an update on code enforcement. The reason I'm asking for this is that, you know, we've had a change in code enforcement's operation due to legislation that was passed last year. As you know, we were in the, we were kind of in the process of creating a vacant property commission, and we put that on hold because, or I don't know, maybe we didn't even necessarily put it on hold, maybe we canceled that because of the change in the legislation. So, I'd like to get a report from our code enforcement to see how that's going, how the change in legislation has changed, what they're doing, if it's been any change at all, just to see if it's been a smooth and seamless transition, and if there's any need for this vacant property commission. We can talk about it in the committee meeting, but I was thinking that we would, yeah, try to, if there's anything to report, that we would report it in the next council meeting. And then also, I'd like to ask for time in the next committee meeting to get an update on the codification of our ordinances, and that's all I've got for the Mayor's Report. If there's no questions for me, then we'll move on to reports of committees. First up is public safety, police. Mrs. Sudcamp?
Yes, sir. March showed an unusually low number of new cases assigned to investigations. Only four were assigned. At the same time, four old cases were closed out. Detectives work, continually working on older cases and background investigation on police recruits. An arrest was made in the highly-publicized shoplifting turned robbery at the Home Depot in Crescent Springs. First I thought it was the Home Depot in Florence. When I heard it was at Crescent Springs, I knew he was done, because our boys know what to do. Community Resource Officer, in March, I attended the Optimist Club of Covington, the Queen City Club, and Kenton County Alliance. I gave a tour of the police department to Cub Scout PAC 708. I attended firearms training. I also gave a tour of the police department to six groups of students from Titianer Middle School on Government Day. I started a background investigation for a potential new hire. I assisted the detective's office, and with the media's help, a suspect was located who injured a worker at Home Depot during a theft. At the request of Serena Owen, I attended a Safety and Justice Forum at NKU. I read to Miles Elementary School during the book fair, and himself and Officer Eglar attended the Gathering of the Eagles in Richmond for the CJED graduation.
And I, before I continue the report, I want to compliment our department heads on their creative reports. For example, the Earlanger Police Department, they always have these colorful photos. It makes it a lot more interesting to read the reports, and there's a cute picture of K-9 Bodo. Caught my attention, I love these German Shepherds, and anyway, I just, I want to compliment them. I know the Fire Department and the Public Works, they've implemented some very creative ways of doing their reports. The DARE program and the SROs continue to be busy at their respective schools. The K-9 Unit assisted in vehicle searches at Lloyd, which resulted in one arrest for marijuana. Officer Shepherd has been teaching DARE at St. Henry while training Officer Ernst from the Elsmere PD. He has also read to students at two elementaries and is making contact for Mayor Hermes to do the same at the elementary schools. And then the training, this month, the firearms training was conducted at the Florence Police Department's firing range, and conditions were less than desirable, as it was either very cold or very rainy, with the exception of one day. Many agencies conduct static ranges where you simply draw, stand still, and fire, but we try to focus on making our ranges as practical as possible, incorporating decision-making, moving and shooting, and weapons malfunctions that may occur in real-life situations. The better we can mimic real life in our training environment and sharpen our officer's skills, we feel the better their chances of surviving a deadly force encounter. In addition, we also conducted training in bleeding control and self-application of tourniquets, and here's a picture of the range where they were shooting, so, very cool. And Chief Wilson is in the house.
Just a little bit off-range, compared to the first day, I'd say you can transfer a plan, a plan, sorry, six, eight months in advance, or I think it spanned five days or two weeks, raining cold days. Monday, Tuesday was raining cold, and Wednesday, we attended, it was sunny and warm, so we're lucky enough, but it's something that we emphasize a lot, so we never know when our guys are really through when we put in that situation, so we don't cancel based on weather. We've been on a continual hiring page the last six, eight months, replacing...
Do I take the mic?
I was just about done.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, then.
We were just, we're just still replacing retirements and vacancies, so I think we've got just about everybody hired. I think we have three or four more slots to go to the police academy this year, and we have two more vacancies that we need to fill, and we should be done unless someone else is planning to leave that we don't know about, which we usually don't know for at least two weeks before they're going to leave, so... But hopefully after that, we should be good, and then we're going to start looking at other folks to hire for next year's retirement, so I think we got four or five leaving. So I think we got four or five leaving next year. So ongoing, if anybody knows any good candidates, we're giving a test next month. Should be on the website. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. That was a great report. You bet you guys have had a busy month.
Yes.
Okay, next, under public safety, fire EMS, Mrs. Pitts, Mrs. Fetty.
Okay, for training this month, new hire orientations started and it'll go from March 27th through April 7th. With the loss of five of our career employees since the first of the year, we've hired five new full-time and one new part-time employee. They started on March 27th and they'll complete a two-week orientation to prepare them for shift work. And then they're going to be introduced next month individually. For community involvement and public education, on March 24th, members attended the Bad Bags for Badges event at Howell Elementary. Fourth grade students collected donations and wrote thank you notes for their service. And then on March 28th, instructors from our, from the fire department recertified our public works department, which is done every two years in CPR and first aid. This time, they also included weather-related health emergencies and fire extinguisher training. Then for March 2017, the total runs were 468. Fire included 263 and EMS were 205. And Chief, you're in the house if you have any.
I did want to say that next month, we'll be introducing the five new hires ceremony, the council meeting. And I also wanted to say with all the different, we, you know, some of our public safety employees leaving that I thought I should share with you. Cause I'm, I never get a mic.
Get to use the mic or what?
For those that didn't hear, next month, we'll be announcing, I guess, introducing the five new hires that will start on shift this Saturday. And amongst all the doom and gloom with some of our previous police members, fire members leaving for other departments, I wanted to know that your efforts have already made an effect on our department. We've had two people, one gentleman turned down the city of Florence. He also removed himself from the city of Covington. And we had another employee that has since removed himself from Covington's list and declined what was likely to be an offer in Newport.
Wow.
So, you know, I, you, I don't, you know, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're, we're heading in the right direction, your efforts that you've made and will continue to make. And just wanted to share some of that was really good news. So I just wanted to thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
That's good to hear. Thank you. Great feedback.
All right, the next, we've got public works. Mr. Skidmore?
The Nelson Road Sidewalk Project that runs from Buck Hill Drive to Ashmont Drive has begun and the first 300 feet is already done. The Erlanger Road Phase One Construction Project is scheduled to begin in the week of April the 3rd. This project is a portion of Erlanger Road between Halbert and Baker. Mr. Daugherty, Bill Daugherty Wilson, attended the Kentucky League of City Safety and Risk Conference in Louisville on March the 8th. And Mr. Daugherty has administered an annual OSHA mandated training for the public works and team members on March the 29th and March the 30th. And that's all I have. And Mr. Mulligan, do you have anything else?
Thank you.
Way to go, Ed.
Oh, that's cute.
Just want to give everybody a reminder, construction season's underway. Like Don said, you know, we've got projects going on on the east side of town, projects starting right here in the middle of town. Look for the orange barrels, keep an eye out for the workers. There's hundreds of these guys that get hit, killed every year. Keep an eye out, stay off your phones and hopefully everything goes smooth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. All right, next, under administration, Mrs. Skidmore?
Okay. We just completed our city government month last Friday, I believe it was. Sixty Titianer Middle School students participated in the annual field trip with the city of Erlanger on March 24th, 2017. United Dairy Farmers and the Erlanger Historical Society participated. The Erlanger Elsmere School District provided a school bus for the day as well as a driver and her name was Jane Arnold. And the Kenton County Alliance, Lisa Anglin, and the Kentucky House Representative, Adam Koenig, provided information for us to give to the students. And Lisa, although Kenton County Alliance also provided like the bag that would hold everything that the kids were given so that if they lost it, they could just lose it all or they could hold on to it easier. And the students received a bus tour of Erlanger that included Flagship Park, Public Works Facility. They actually loved the stickers that Public Works made. They were wear, they wore them. They were wearing them on their faces, but it was okay. They were wearing them, okay? So the Depot Museum and the Caboose and UDF, that's United Dairy Farmers, also known as Ice Cream. They also received a walking tour that included general government, fire EMS, and police. That was here after they did, it was like a round robin. We had a group of 30 that went on the bus in the morning and a group of 30 that stayed here in the morning. And then we all met at lunchtime and we switched and we took the bus, the second group on the bus tour and the second, this other second group did the other administration thing here. So while the students were visiting the city building, they had the opportunity to meet Mayor Hermes. Students also were able to meet council members, myself and Kathy Cahill. And there was a special thank you, I don't write these, I just read them. It was a special thank you to everyone who helped to make this event a success. And some of the other things that we mentioned on the tour was that the Erlanger Branch Library is the busiest library in the state of Kentucky. Also, and this is a little, little known fact, I think, the center of the population of the United States in 1880 is located near the viewing area at the Greater Cincinnati Northern Kentucky International Airport. There's actually a sign there, Historical Society. And we also told the kids that Donaldson Road changes its name to Commonwealth as you come underneath the overpass for the expressway. Lot of trivia here, so. And this, all this information comes out of the historical book that Erlanger did quite a few years ago. And the center of the city is just north of Susan Lewis Drive off of Stevenson. It's across and it's back, if, I think it was Hillcrest Church sits there. That's the nearest pinpoint for the center of the city of Erlanger. And we asked the students what state, what state in the United States that Erlanger was most, looked like? It's the state of California because we're long and narrow. Okay, all right. House Bill Three, prevailing wage, it was, it amended various KRS sections to delete prevailing wage provisions. The bill was passed and signed by the governor and that makes it easier for us to get a better deal on some of our projects, I think.
Should.
And citizen waste collection concerns for this month, there were none. There were no reservations for the Depot Shelter. I don't understand, the Depot Park is a really neat park, but I don't know why they don't do reservations there. Maybe they don't know they're available. Passports, we did 150 this month. Total amount collected this month was $3,675. Total amount collected in fiscal year '17 was $14,575 and that is all profit, I believe. Right, Sherry?
Yes.
The post office gave up doing passports like that a long time ago. That's, so our gain, their loss. Museum report, total visitors this month was 124, but they only opened for the season on March the 14th. Scholarship application deadline was March the 10th. Laser craze night for Erlanger residents only was eight, eight to 10 p.m. on Sunday, 12th of March. Fifty people attended and it was awesome because with that small of an amount, the kids just, they just kept getting in line and they just kept doing it over and over and over. So it, it was great. Worked out nice. Silver Lake Swim Night, 80 attended that one. And the school field trip obviously was 60 because it was 30 students in each group. And the star party at Flagship Park, that was this past Sunday night. It was nice, but it was also cloudy. We got to see the moon a little bit, but I, I think it's worth doing again at some time later. Easter party at the library is the 9th of April, which is, I believe, this Sunday. And it's from 1:30 to 3:30 and then Putt Putt will be on April the 30th and it's a three to five. Again, all these, all these events are for Erlanger residents only. ID, you have to show ID with the right street on it. And I wanted to mention, and Joe, I want to thank you for some of the things that you put on your information thing, the bullets that you use. It says, this is really interesting. It says, according to the student loan report, the top 250 places to pay off student debt, the city of Erlanger ranked number 54 in the United States, number three in the state, and number one in Northern Kentucky for being one of the best places to pay off student debt.
Wow.
Oh, for heaven's sake. I didn't know that.
We're known for something. And then I want to talk a little bit about the waste collection that's coming up under legislation. I just want to read a few little things here that we discussed in the committee meeting. Our first term with Republic Services expires 6:30 of this year. We have the option to renew our contract with them for an additional two years. There would be a 2.5% increase for the extension. Currently, residents pay $2.16 per pickup or $112.20 per year for waste collection. If we renew the contract starting 7/1/2017, residents would pay $2.26 per pickup or $117.62 per year for regular waste collection. For those that recycle, recycle pickups will go from $4.75 a month to $4.98 a month. And it was even, this is broken down even a little bit better. We started in July of 2015 at 9:35 a month. And then by the time we get to June of 2025, which is eight years, we're at 11:36 a month. So that's $2 from when we started in 15 until we're going to finish this paperwork here in 2025. So you're only talking $2. So, and they've, as I read earlier in the report, there were no complaints this month. So my recommendation when we get to the legislation is go ahead and do it because if it's not broke, it doesn't need fixed. End of report.
That's a two-year renewal, right?
Renee, I will make one more mention. I was just mentioning to Mr. Fields, as you may or may not be aware, I've been taking a look at the, the overall taxes in each city, city by city, and basically trying to take the same information and looking at, you know, all things being equal from city to city. Evaluating everything from the real and tangible properties to the insurance premium taxes and what they pay for fire districts and things like that. But part of this evaluation is also what they pay in garbage collection fees because that makes a difference too. And of the 13 cities I've evaluated so far, Erlanger is the lowest in the garbage collection fees. Now, part of that might be because we don't do the recycling, but I think there's other cities here that also don't do the recycling, but, and we're still paying less. So it's a good sign.
Well, and we have quality. They're, they're just great at what they do.
They are, yeah.
That's, that's really important.
Yeah, they're quick to respond too.
Well, and for no complaints for the month, that's something too.
It does. It's a great point. Mrs. Hoffman's in the house. Do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to finance and business development. Mr. Blankenship, Mr. Montgomery?
Thank you. First, we had the committee meeting discuss the Erlanger Commerce Center project. We're going to be hearing a resolution on that to do a development agreement. Secondly, on the budget, staff's been finalizing work on the fiscal year 2017 amended budget and the fiscal year 2018 proposed budget. We would like a finance committee meeting on April 18th to discuss changes that have been made to the proposed budget since we had our March 4th council budget retreat. Right now, the first reading of the ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2017 budget and to approve the fiscal year 2018 budget will be May 2nd on our council meeting. And the second reading will take place at the June 6th council meeting. And we began seeking candidates and conducting interviews for the finance clerk position and the deadline for applications on that is Thursday, April the 6th. I believe that's all. The committee, also there's a note here for the hiring event. Ms. Fetty's organizing that if you want to present something on that.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that have started assisting with calling businesses. From the businesses that I've spoken to, it seems like this is something that we should move forward with. Seems like I'm getting a lot of interest.
I've had about five that are for sure, couple maybes, and then there's two, I'm not sure how to deal with Speedway and Great Clips or whatever. They're corporate, say hire corporate for all over and they kind of want to be involved, but it wouldn't be just for Erlanger. So I don't know how you guys want to deal with that.
Yeah, I had that same thing with Snappy Tomato Pizza. They said they'd like to participate, but they would want a guy from the corporate office to come in. So have somebody from Erlanger, the Erlanger store, but then also have corporate office represented as well. So it, I don't know. I mean, it's something that we can talk about. I think we should, if we can, put some time on the committee meeting so that we can talk about just planning a date. Cause I know a lot of them, when I'm talking to them, they're like, what, when is the date? When is it happening? Cause they want to either put it on their calendar or say they can't do it. So I think if we, if we want to move forward, we need to just figure out a date. And I was thinking, Corinne said something about the early May possibly?
That's probably too soon.
Early May?
I don't think we can get it together that quick. But it would be nice to do it for like, if they want a summer hire, but I don't know if early May would be able to pull off, but maybe towards the end.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been several I've talked to as well and that's their first question.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can talk about that at the next committee meeting, that would be awesome.
Okay.
Pick a date and all that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bodie is in the house?
I'm dead.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hahn, anything to add?
Yeah, Mr. Hahn had mentioned there's been some people express some interest in potentially acquiring some of the city-owned property. We'd like to have that on the agenda for our committee meeting as well.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right, then next, we've got codes, building, and zoning. Mr. Burke, Mr. Nicely?
I have no report, but Mr. Hahn did send out the reports to everyone. If anybody has any questions, contact me or Mr. Hahn.
Actually, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
We're good.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Hahn, if you have nothing further to report, okay, then we'll move on. So we've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that they be adopted as presented? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, under reports of representatives, the first, oh, actually, I said, do we have any reports from representatives? Okay, of course. We'll, we'll start with Mrs. Kyle.
Okay, this is the Historical Society and they participated in the annual Titianer Middle School Field Trip, as Ms. Skidmore had announced before, by giving tours of the historic Depot Museum and the Caboose. And their next meeting is on April the 12th at 7:00 p.m. at the Depot Museum located at 3319 Crescent Avenue. And Mr. Ed Von I, who is in the audience here, will have a presentation about Tom Sawyer and Becky Thatcher. And then another great day to celebrate is they're going to celebrate railroad history and that's going to be Saturday, May the 13th. It's National Train Day and festivities will be held at the museum and in the Depot Park. And they do have a new website and it's really easy to remember because it's ErlangerHistoricalSociety.com. So check that out also. May 13th.
What time?
It doesn't have a time. Ed, do you know?
Train day.
Train day that they're going to do at the Depot? They don't have a time on here. I'm thinking maybe.
Go ahead, give me the number.
Okay.
All right.
At least he does the machines.
I'll mention briefly, the last mayor's group meeting, the, a lot of the discussion was, revolved around the response to the storm that we had, and the high winds and the tornado-like activity, and the alerts and things that were involved with that. That was probably the highlight of, of the things that were discussed there. Ms. Skidmore, I saw you had your hand up as well.
I wanted to.
Noon to 5.
Noon to 5, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to go ahead and report on the Kenton County Alliance meeting, and I also wanted to back up a little bit on the, on the field trip that we had. While we're on the trip, as we come back from Flagship Park, and we come on to Stevenson, and come all the way back to Public Works, during the trip back, we're just bypassing some, we're coming back past some things we've already talked about. So during that time, we do a quiz with the kids on drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. And it's like, it's multiple choice, and we don't embarrass anybody, we just say, you know, who thinks it's A, who thinks it's, and they all get to shouting and screaming, so you don't know what anybody picked. And then I read the, I read the correct answer. So that's, that's kind of educational, too, because we've got to cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is. So, anyway, at the meeting today, we talked about the Butterfly Metamorphosis Program. It's progressing very well. The process deals with the full cycle of the butterfly and how students at risk associate with this. Boone County has established a Boone County Alliance, and there are nine sites, and high school students work with the elementary students as mentors. And it kind of works out really well, because the high school students have kind of like been there, done that. So they're able to relate to the kids, and the kids think it's really neat to have someone to look up to that's not an adult. So it really works well. And the Kenton County Fair will have a setup with information about drug prevention, but it's going to be student-driven. There'll be students there to talk to the kids and pass out information and, you know, give positive reinforcement, so that the kids don't think they're being, like, preached to and, you know, hounded and kind of things like that. And Spring Clean is clean up Northern Kentucky. It's a drug deactivate, they're going to have drug deactivation pouches. I have one. They're supposed to be, they're supposed to be available at Kroger and at the senior centers in.